Good evening. It's Monday, October 2nd, and this is a meeting of the Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda is a discussion item, MBTA Communities Debrief Public Outreach Forums. Who wants to debrief?
We can start with the board.
We can start with the board. What did everybody think? And since then, has anybody gotten comments? I've gotten a long list of emails, so we have a list started, emails, phone numbers, people that are interested.
I can add a few things to it.
Oh, absolutely. Go right ahead.
So, the second forum that happened last Thursday, was it Thursday or Wednesday? It was Wednesday. I'm sorry, on the 27th. So, you know, we scurried because we thought there was going to be a capacity problem. In the morning, we found out 49 people was the capacity. So, we posted a new agenda saying, please be aware, all that, you know, if you can watch it through Zoom. So, it turns out the room filled up pretty good. There were a few vacant seats, but I think several of the people were repeats. But Lily Link from Chappa came, and I was there at the beginning, and then I handed it off, and everything seemed to go pretty well. Colleen had created a big map with our DPW director, which I think a lot of people raved about. Just the map being there, we had like a presence.
It was the excluded land map.
Yeah. Yep. So, it was a good joint effort with the DPW because our new DPW director has very, a lot of knowledge about GIS applications, and so it worked out perfectly. And then, we did receive some positive feedback, people supporting the initiative. And I think, what else did we get here? We got a letter from, actually, Mimi got an email from Matthew Salem, who's a resident at 248 Cordova Road, with some comments about different parcels around the train station area that he thought might be applicable, or might be worth looking at. So, that's super helpful. Also, Sam Stivers came in to my office yesterday.
No, that would be Sunday.
No, it was Friday. Not yesterday, Friday. And I briefed Colleen on it this morning pretty quickly, but he had some good ideas too about moving into the next phase of the workshops. And that perhaps one thing to consider would be that instead of putting it out like a free-for-all and at the meetings, having people have all kinds of input, perhaps come up with one or two or three options that you present, maybe five options that we already have thought out. In other words, you have your 10 acres around the train station, and then you might have various locations of 5, 10, 12, 15 acre, whatever you, you know, come up with, or we come up with, and present it in these workshops that way. It might be beneficial to hone in on something, to give people some choices already, instead of having on... You know, I know we talked about the Dell property, and, you know, there were comments that some of that might create too much density down there, all in one spot, even though it appears to be a really good place to do it. That spreading it out, the, into smaller portions, might keep with the theme of the town of Southborough, the Morgue Collet Farm land, and they'll, these locations will blend in better, as opposed to one high dense area that becomes like a little urban center instead of blending with the rest of the town. So, that was a couple of things.
Got some feedback about Route 9 too, the Route 9, they were talking mixed use possible.
From the EDC?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you, I think you talked more to them about that. So, the EDC, if you have anything to add, say, I can't recollect what they were saying.
So, it was just, they'd been doing a study along Route 9, as you probably are aware, for the past couple of years for sewage, and that type of a study for infrastructure. And they came up with the idea that they could possibly hop on with this and have the first floor being commercial, and then support the residential district, I mean, above, the residential apartments or something above. They've just had a hard time filling that Route 9, so they thought this might be an opportunity they could look at.
Right. Yep. And there's also a study going on with, through a grant from the One Stop Program from last year, the year before, about, you know, public sewer along Route 9, as opposed to approaching it for the whole town, because that didn't go over well the first time for the whole town. Yeah, so that's pretty good.
Yes, that was a, yeah, so lots of ideas floating around. And there were a couple of women that came up personally to me after, and said that they were very supportive. They didn't feel comfortable speaking out, but they did like it, because one of them actually wanted to live in a condo here.
Yeah, that was good feedback. And then also, from the Municipal Technology Committee, we received, from Matt Probst, he's the Chair of the MTC, they're putting out a survey through the town, and they were asking if the Planning Board wanted to ask any questions related to the MBTA in that survey. A few questions, if you had any in mind. Did they give you a timeline on that? Let me look what it says here.
I think it's going 12, something like that. Is it already out?
Can I ask a question about that survey? They did attach the 2022 survey, and I was just wondering if Planning Board looked at that survey? Is anybody looking at it, matching it up with the master plan? I guess I was unaware that they're doing a survey, and I was just wondering, in the past, have the boards and committees used the results of that survey to make changes and things?
Well, I can tell you this. Let me just read a little bit from the email that accompanied it. "The MTC is putting together another instance of town citizen survey, mostly to solicit satisfaction sentiment of citizens. We also use it as a tool to measure opinion on a select number of upcoming issues that might be contentious in town meeting. By way of example attached is the 2022 version of the survey. Given that you anticipate MBTA will not be a relatively easy subject at town meeting, we invite the Planning Board to contribute three to five questions of your choice. We will likely open up the survey to start collecting responses in mid-October and close it in mid-November. We'll share our responses to these questions with the Planning Board. Please let us know if you would be interested in adding some questions." So, it's kind of a broad-based survey. Maybe, I think it's good collaboration that they reached out to see if we wanted to participate.
And I think he was looking for more yes or no questions rather than open-ended questions, so... I don't know if you can think of any that would give us information on MBTA with just yes or no answers?
Mimi, do we know when the timeframe of when the survey is going out? Did I miss that in the email?
It's going out mid-October.
It is? Okay, thank you.
Mimi, can they be multiple choice or just a yes/no? So, forced answer, no, open-ended, basically?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure we can come up with a few questions that we should probably leverage. But to answer Dubb's question, I never even knew we did a survey. I don't think I ever have ever responded to a survey.
It was the master plan was the last one, wasn't it?
No, one of their, MTC.
Oh.
I've never, I don't even know how they distribute it. I go to every town meeting. No, but how do they let the town know about it? I mean, how do they know to actually respond to the survey? Like, is it, is it generated through the email that, you know, if you're on the email distribution in town? I think this is, comes back to our really poor ability to communicate with our residents. And I'm very actively involved and never even knew the survey went out.
So, Tim, you're on the committee, right? Not any longer?
Never.
Okay. I thought you were part of it because you always are a computer guru. Okay. So, these are some questions I can, we can follow up with the Chair of the MTC and find out, you know, could you give us a little bit more in detail for the process? And, you know, what they do with the results and where those results end up? How it gets out there, and then how it gets, how it gets on the final product? What happens with that? And when does that come out?
I think we looked at it there last survey when we, on master plan, we looked at the results. Yeah.
I think that they use the scale. I'm looking around for the 2022 one, if you have it in front of you, but it wasn't yes or no questions. It was like on a scale from 1 to 5. How do you feel about living in Southborough? So, I think we could use a scale if they're going to do a scale.
Yeah, yeah. Just not, it's not set up for the open.
No open, and I got you.
It has excellent to don't know, you know, I mean, it has, so there'll be a topic, and then it says, has like five different choices, from, you know, excellent, good, neutral, below average, poor, and don't know, standard type thing. And it appears there's, that seems to be mostly the format.
It's a long survey. I went through it.
And you can see that it's all, the questions have, towards the end, there are some...
So, we don't need to go through the details. I can take a look and then provide some recommendations. And I'll connect with you, Colleen and Karina, and then you guys can circulate it.
And I'll find out, we'll get some information on how the process works.
So, next up, workshops, right?
Yeah. So, just to, to debrief, I think things went very well. Lily did an outstanding job.
I thought so too.
It was almost as if she has done that for 44 other communities. Yeah, and for next steps, that's an interesting idea from Sam. I'd like, for, have we had a chance to reach out to Lexington at all?
No, I did, I have my note, I saw it today, but I did not reach out yet.
Okay. Because Lexington did this mapping exercise, and I suggested to Colleen that she could reach out and see how they did it, and whether, whether it was just open-ended, and how they, they had stickers that they stuck on the map, and how those translated to acreage, or, you know, all the, all the nitty-gritty details. And I, I think we should be careful about making too many decisions when we said we're looking for input. And then the question would be when to do those. And I was thinking, like, the last week in October to give us some time to put it together in the first week in November?
The last week evenings work for me.
Okay.
Mimi, do you mean the last week, the week of the 23rd, or?
Yes. So, I was thinking two, so the week of the 23rd, and then the week of the 30th.
Okay. The 23rd, I'm down with my folks, but I can Zoom in, and...
Are you there that whole week?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And I'm good the first week in November.
That brings up a question. Would we have Zoom if we're working more on maps? I did have one comment from somebody at our last forum that said that we didn't take any participation over Zoom.
We did hear that too.
Yeah, so I, I thought, well, that's, it was sort of becoming kind of interactive. So, if this is really interactive, I don't, I don't know if we could do it, yeah. What about slightly before you go away?
Sorry, I leave the 22nd, and I don't come back to the 30th.
I think we need more time to actually think about the logistics, who's facilitating? What is the workshop? What is the objectives? And really putting a plan together, so conducting workshops for part of my living, I would say hybrid does not work. You need to have it in person, so you missed one. That's right, we can cover. But I think we just really need to think about what the plan looks like, how we're allocating the hours. Is it during the night? Is it on the weekend? What would be best for the community? Should we do one weekend day, like a day, and one the next weekend night, weekday night? So, maybe like a Saturday or Sunday at the library or something, and do it a little bit more interactive.
At the senior center, so we don't run into capacity issues.
But I think really kind of thinking through. Our next meeting is the 16th, since this is my thing. So, I guess I can help with really thinking through what does the, what's the time block look like? Because when you're doing an interactive workshop like that, you need a lot of, like, time to really explain it, carry it through, so I'm going to say at least two hours.
Oh, okay.
You might want to consider one of the school cafeterias or something for capacity. I've seen some public forums done there, and they're much larger than any of our town buildings.
Microphones are an issue in those forums for people to hear us. It's the only challenge.
If we're not being televised or Zoomed, we might be able to ask for a camera to video it, but I don't think that would be the focus. The focus would be the residents.
Right, but we have to be, we have to be able to instruct, yeah, instruct and project, and if it's too big...
So, why don't we say this? We'll take this offline. We work on logistics, what the plan is for the workshop. Come back to the Planning Board on the 16th and share what that looks like. But maybe we finalize the dates in advance. How's Jessie for dates for availability?
Jessie's there now, and the attendees, I mean, he's actually a panelist now, isn't he?
Hi, I'm here. How are you for dates for the week of the 23rd of October or the 30th?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
I'll email you offline, Mimi.
All right. And Debbie?
Oh, I'm available.
Okay. And just to the capacity issue, I just want to thank Lisa. She spent the morning moving tables out of the way and collecting chairs, and then found out that there was a 49-person capacity in that room. So, thank you for your heavy lifting.
You're welcome.
Also, as we think about ahead too, the senior center has a capacity of 100. So, that might be helpful as you, you think about the path forward. Only because we went over and tried to figure out what the capacity was after we found out we couldn't go over the 49, so, but it is 100 there.
So, is it going to be contingent on when senior center is available? Because that is probably a good place to do it.
I would think so, yeah.
I can find that out and share tomorrow via email.
Yeah, and then administratively, just settle on two dates.
Do we have precise dates or still just week of? We didn't, we hung in on two or three days, we just...
We need to make sure that the, see when the senior center is available.
Senior center first, okay. But the two weeks were doable, the two week ofs, yeah, okay. And senior center.
Anyone else on the board have any debrief comment, workshop comment, anything on MBTA?
So, I have a quick question, just real quickly. So, was the general consensus that the approach would still be quite open? As opposed to like honing in on some options, or what did the board feel? Like, leave it open to the public initially, and, I mean, I didn't get, I didn't get a sense of what you guys felt might be a good approach, or is that too early to ask that?
I would hope we could reach out to Lexington and pick their brains.
I also think we've gotten some initial suggestions, so I think that I would recommend we go broad versus biasing any results with our recommendations.
Can I just say one thing on the debrief, Mimi? I was really happy with the turnout that we had. I think, Marnie, thank you for all the work you and Colleen did in putting together the mailing that got done. I think that reached a lot of people, I think through other avenues, the backpacks through school. I know I had a couple of parents say things to me about that. So, I really think we utilized every avenue that we could. People are talking about it. I don't think, from my standpoint, there were any real surprises. I think people are scared, and they came because they were scared. And I think my takeaway was, at least they walked away knowing that there's a conversation that's going to take place. We have nothing set in stone, everything is on the table. But again, I just wanted to thank Marnie and Colleen for all of the, the work that you guys put into getting us to that point, and also to thank Lily, because she was just phenomenal. Thank you. So, I do have one last question. We do have a basis of a bylaw, and I'd like to share it with the boards and start thinking about how you want to fill it in, whether it be, you know, start with some setbacks. It will probably bring up questions for the public as well, as we look through it.
So, I would think a lot of that would depend on where the overlays are. So, I think like setbacks on Route 9 and building height would be different than, you know, within neighborhoods. So, I think a lot of that depends.
Well, that's why I was thinking, you know, as we, we read through it, it brings up questions in my own mind, things that we should be asking.
Sure.
So, I will share that with all of you.
Awesome, thank you.
Colleen, can I ask, is that the, the draft zoning town of Southborough that was in the Technical Assistance Summary Memorandum? In the very back, there's a draft, is, is that like the starting point you're using? Was from that? Okay, thank you. That was one we got from Bowler.
Does anyone else have any comment, MBTA communities? Anyone online? Okay. We ready to move on from this one? The next item on the agenda is a public hearing? Oh, we can't do, we can't move on yet. Do you want to do Planner's Report? Or do you want to bring another discussion forward?
We could probably do the job descriptions.
Okay.
Because that's not going to take...
We can probably do the job descriptions right now. We'll bring that forward, because that really doesn't interface with the public as much as the other topics do. So, the town had an initiative to format all the staff's job descriptions so that every thing had a very similar format, kind of pull everything together and organize. So, we received copies of our job descriptions and were asked to comment on them already last year. And then, the consultant revisited them and redrafted them and provided us with that copy, and then asked for us to review it one more time, and then get your job descriptions approved by your board. So, with the time we had so far, at the last meeting, we had spoken that Mimi would be working with me to work on those. And so, we got, mine didn't change very much. We just tweaked it, and they kind of reordered where certain things are. You know, supervision is at the end, and skills is in the middle, and stuff like that. So, I had a few minor comments, and Mimi reviewed it, and I provided a copy to everybody to take a look at. And I think Mimi said you were happy with how that turned out, so that one's all set. So, what I'd like to do is take this week to look at Colleen's. They are due on the 6th, but if I can work with Colleen on hers, and then get with Mimi on that one, and Mimi can kind of sign off on that, and then we'll present Colleen's to the next, we'll give it to you for the next meeting, so we won't be too far behind on that.
Is everyone on the board all set with the Planner's Job Description?
Okay.
Mr. Stein, are you all set with that?
Yes, thank you, all set.
Okay. So, just to recap, well, mine should be all set right now, and then we'll work on Colleen's job description, so it meets everything. There is an addendum to Colleen's, because business admin is a, is a, across many departments, and each department's admin has an addendum of specific tasks for that department. So, we'll work on populating that page, and then we'll work with Mimi, and we'll get that one fixed too, and we'll be good to go. Okay? Okay. All right. And I can...
We can pull public shade tree policy forward, because that's just a quick update.
Okay.
So, Lisa and I met with Sam and Al someday last week, I don't remember. And had a very productive meeting, a good discussion, and Sam went and updated the policy and sent it back out, and there was still a couple of things that we discussed that didn't quite get in there. So, we're going to meet again later this week, and then we'll have a draft policy to, or draft changes to come to the next Planning Board meeting.
Can I just?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you for doing that, and I think it just is a great olive branch, like, to be able to work collaboratively like that, it's just a really good step forward. So, thanks for initiating that and having it, and thanks to Al and Sam for sitting down. But that's how things get done in town, is by working together. So, hopefully, this starts a new trend.
Did you have anything additional, Lisa, that you wanted to?
I did not. You covered it, Mimi. Thank you.
Anything else on that? Debbie or Jessie?
Nice job. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thanks. Okay, we still have five minutes.
I can go over a couple of things from the Planner's Report.
So, similarly...
I think Mimi said you were happy with how that turned out. So, that one's all set. So, what I'd like to do is take this week to look at Colleen's. They are due on the 6th, but if I can work with Colleen on hers and then get with Mimi on that one, and Mimi can kind of sign off on that, and then we'll present Colleen's to the next, we'll give it to you for the next meeting. So, we won't be too far behind on that.
Is everyone on the board all set with the planner's job description?
Okay.
Mr. Stein, are you all set with that?
Yes, thank you all.
Okay. So, just to recap, mine should be all set right now, and then we'll work on Colleen's job description so it meets everything. There is an addendum to Colleen's because business admin is a, is a, across many departments, and each department's admin has an addendum of specific tasks for that department. So, we'll work on populating that page, and then we'll work with Mimi, and we'll get that one fixed too, and we'll be good to go.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And I can...
We can pull public shade tree policy forward, because that's just a quick update.
Okay.
So, Lisa and I met with Sam and Al someday last week. I don't remember. And had a very productive meeting, a good discussion. And Sam went and updated the policy and sent it back out. And there was still a couple of things that we discussed that didn't quite get in there. So, we're going to meet again later this week. And then we'll have a draft policy to, or draft changes to come to the next planning board meeting.
Can I just?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you for doing that. And I think it just is a great olive branch, like to be able to work collaboratively like that. It's just a really good step forward. So, thanks for initiating that and having it. And thanks to Al and Sam for sitting down. But that's how things get done in town, is by working together. So, hopefully this starts a new trend.
Did you have anything additional, Lisa, that you wanted to?
I did not. You covered it, Mimi. Thank you.
Anything else on that? Debbie or Jessie?
Nice job. Thank you very much for doing that.
Thanks. Okay, we still have five minutes.
I can go over a couple of things from the planner's report.
Okay.
So, similarly, let's see here. What were we talking about? 21 Highland Street. At the last meeting, I think Mimi made a suggestion that a letter would be written to the select board requesting planning board have an opportunity to review under MGL 40A 81I, right? So, when we looked at that, I spoke to Bill Kundoff a little bit about that, and he mentioned something to the effect that that was for roadway layout as opposed to a park or a building. But he, he just, I just talked to him very briefly about it. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're going down the right path. And I think we are, but I just wanted to put that out there. Because Mimi had drafted a relatively straightforward letter requesting that information to happen. And I just want to make sure that we don't get pushback from town council if there's any question to that, that we're prepared to respond.
So, Bill is correct. The beginning of that section relates to alteration, relocation, or discontinuance of a road. But then it goes on to say, "Any city or town having a planning board established under Section 81A may, by ordinance, bylaw, or vote, provide for the reference of any other matter or class of matters to the planning board before final action thereon, with or without the provision that final action shall not be taken until the planning board has submitted its report or has had reasonable fixed time to submit such a report. Such planning board shall have full power to make investigations, maps, and reports, and recommendations in connection there in relating to any of the subjects referred to it under this section as it deems desirable." So, I would think that's pretty broad.
Bill, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us.
Sure thing.
I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, because we want to kind of work as a big team. That's the goal.
Sure.
So, I don't know if you just heard, Mimi read the MGL referencing why the planning board believes they can request review of the park project as well as 21 Highland Street. And I guess, you know, in speaking with you, it's more related to the park project in general, because it's not a, it's a, it'll be a DPW cared-for property, I would imagine. So, what, you know, I reiterated your take on that. So, I was wondering if you had anything in response to that.
Yeah. My recollection, and again, this is prior to my starting here, but my recollection is that town council was, input from town council was sought on the park matter. Is that true?
Yes.
Yeah, with regards to site plan, not sought from us, but from the select board.
Okay. I really don't have anything to add to that.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Those Mass general laws can get confusing. And I remember when we were looking at the park project initially, in the land, during the land swap, that there were like three different MGLs there that kind of said the same thing, whether you had an official map or not. So, they're tough to interpret sometimes.
I still would like to proceed with the letter, and I think it just reinforces the importance of independent counsel for planning board. And that's my two cents.
And this is the letter regarding 21 Highland Street at this point, because that's what I pulled out of the planner's report.
Mr. Stein?
So, I guess the question is, Mimi, is you had drafted this letter, and you're just looking for the final planning board's consensus to submit it, right? Or that they like the way the letter was?
Well, so when we were at the select board meeting, they had, they're working to put together a committee to look into this. And my understanding from the person who's working on the draft charge is that he will recommend a planning board member on that committee. So, the question is, should we wait and see what happens, or send that now? With regards to 21 Highland.
You could alter the language to state that you would like to be part of the, you know, have a planning board representation on that, knowing that this now is going to be an extended process, right, until this other feasibility thing is done. But I think a letter in writing, just reinforcing our point of view, is, I prefer it.
I agree. Thanks, Marnie, for putting that into words. I like the letters short and sweet, and I think we should state it and adjust it. Thanks.
I agree as well. So, change the letter to request a planning board member on that committee when it's formed? Okay. And we lost Jessie.
He's dialing in. He just lost his connection.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, he's just dialing back in.
Welcome back, Jessie. Did you hear any of that discussion on 21 Highland?
A little bit, but I'm going to refrain from making any comment because I had some connectivity issues, and I didn't catch all of it.
Would you like me to just give a quick reiteration?
Sure.
So, Mimi had drafted a letter to the select board requesting to have the ability to review plans for 21 Highland Street when they are created. And Marnie brought up that she would also like to see that, since they're creating a committee, that the planning board would request to have a seat on that committee. And I think that at the last select board meeting, there was some intent to have a planning board member on the seat of that committee. And Debbie agreed, and Lisa also thought it was a good idea. So, we just want to make sure you think it's a good idea as well.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, anyone else on that? Anyone here in the room, 21 Highland? I don't see any hands. So, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing for St. Mark's School parking lot and St. Mark's Street major site plan, at St. Mark's Street major site plan.
Yeah. Tricky one. Lots of St. Marks in there. So, first of all, I just want to point out that the planning board webpage, just so the public's aware, a lot of people are used to going to news and announcements to see the public hearing documents and applications that are submitted and site plan applications. We're going to try a new method where we create one large PDF file, which we file with the town clerk. And what he does, he posts that where the agenda and minutes are. And the other, like Conservation Commission, the Select Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, they all use that method. So, instead of having a kind of an odd place where we put all the public hearing info under news and announcements, we're going to do it that way. So, when you see an agenda, you'll also be able to see the meeting packet there. They get a little bit longer that way, but it's all together. And it makes the process a little easier right now, since the website was updated. We're still working on formatting the pages. We have to customize them ourselves a little bit, so, when there's time. But just so you know, as far as St. Mark's School proposed parking lot at the intersection of St. Mark's Street and Marlborough Road, the applicant has requested continuation to the October 16th without testimony. Just to give you a quick update from the last meeting, we received Fasen O'Neill comments on their initial, on the submission number one for the parking lot design. Those were distributed to the applicant and to the planning board members. Let's see here. We received feedback from the building commissioner that the comment number one, which was related to whether a ZBA special permit was required for where the parking was located, and he opined that it did not, because that had surfaced before, and we just wanted clarity. So, now we have a information from the building commissioner as zoning enforcement officer. So, we need a motion to continue the public hearing for the major site plan approval to October 16th.
So, moved.
Second. I have a motion. The second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Luttrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Hulahan, yes.
Demirat, yes.
Brashir, yes.
And soon as the revised submission comes in, we'll redistribute it and get it to Fasen O'Neill to be ready for the next meeting.
The next item on the agenda, 7:10, yes, we're good, is a public hearing, 3 Lyman Street scenic stone wall removal. Do you want to update us on this, Karina? Welcome. Karina will give us an update, and then we'll turn it over to you.
With us tonight is Henry Thompson. He's the owner of 3 Lyman Street, and his wife, Gina, is here as well. And they filed an application for scenic road stone wall removal. Lyman Street is a scenic road. The application was filed with the town clerk, and then a notice was published in the newspaper on September 11th and September 18th, and set the hearing date to this evening. I need to read the legal ad of the public hearing so that you can open it. And we have September 12, 2023, public hearing notice, scenic road stone wall removal, 3 Lyman Street. Pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 40, Section 15(c), the Southborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 2, 2023 at 7:10 p.m. in the McCalliv Hearing Room located on the second floor of the townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. 01772, and via Zoom to consider the partial removal of a stone wall at 3 Lyman Street, a scenic road. The request for stone wall removal was made by Henry Thompson, 3 Lyman Street, for additional driveway access. A copy of the plans and application can be reviewed at the Southborough Townhouse in the Planning Department during normal business hours, or on the planning board's webpage at southboroughmass.gov/552/planningdashboard. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposal should appear at the location and time designated above, or can access the meeting remotely on the mass-southborough.civicplus.com/574/virtual-meetings. Basically, that's the town's main webpage. There is a link right there to virtual meetings, which the public can access. Then, let's see here. The applicant provided a cover letter describing that he would like to remove approximately 11 feet on one side of his driveway in order to have better access in and out of the driveway. If you go a little further, Colleen, we can look at the pictures. And he provided photographs that demonstrate the difficulty and the risk of backing into that stone wall, entering and exiting his driveway. He also provided a plot plan stamped by a licensed surveyor that showed that this piece of the stone wall straddles the property line, hence making it jurisdictional for the planning board. And then he also provided a copy of his septic plan, just to show that where the driveway is and the opening is, gives you a relative perspective to features on the lot, that it doesn't appear it'll be impacting anything significantly there. And that's kind of the update.
Thank you, Karina.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Thompson. Welcome. Do you have anything you want to add to Karina's presentation? Sure.
Yes, I do. The wall, it's been there for many years. And during the years, okay, it's only two and a half feet high. Not a lot, but we've had visitors over there, and the parking lot was filled. Once in a while, somebody would scrape their car against it. And, you know, it was a pain in the butt, but now it got worse for one reason, okay? You look at the parking lot spaces. It wasn't too bad when my big boys, I'm sorry, my sons didn't have their licenses yet, but they do now. And they both have cars. Now, we're running into problems when they are backing up. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stein?
All right. Thanks for coming in. Can the stones be repurposed on the site? Meaning, can you move them and, you know, basically use the stonework elsewhere on the property?
What are you going to do with the stones? The town usually likes to see you reuse them on the property?
What you don't, what you don't see is on the other side of that car going north, that stone, that stone wall is kind of like falling apart. And I'd like to use those stones to build it up again?
That sounds good. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hulahan?
Mr. Thompson, thanks for coming in. So, the first thing I want to ask you is, how did you know you had a scenic road and that you needed to come to the planning board?
By accident.
I'm really just curious.
I was looking for another department for something, and I came up and Karina and Colleen, they, you know how good they are, right? Okay. Downstairs, they seem to want to get like a drive-through. But, okay, I kind of mentioned something. I said, "Do you plan a, oh, maybe I'll ask you a question?" "No, you're busy." So, it opened up.
Well, first of all, thank you, because I think so many residents don't know they live on a scenic road and need to come to the planning board for stone, for stone walls or trees. So, really appreciate that you took that step and you did this, instead of coming back to apologize for moving it later. And I have no questions. I just want to say thank you for doing the process the right way. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Maria?
I want to thank you for coming in also. So, just to confirm, it looks like on the plan, you're just taking it from one side, and it looks like you're going over to where the shrub is now, just sort of opening up. Just, it doesn't look to me like you need 11 feet, but I also see there's shrubbery, so it might look funny. So, is that what's being taken out to the shrubs?
That piece of stone wall, 11, 11 feet from where the edge.
Yep.
And it still leaves those big bushes there, they're there. Okay, the center of those bushes is my property line with the other person. It's still going to leave, taking that out. I'm still going to be a foot although away from their bushes.
Because actually, Debbie, there's a pin there, a property corner pin. And when we looked at it, we scaled the plan with Henry when he was in the office, and he mentioned there was a pin there, and we suggested that you don't move the stone with the pin, which is at the corner, because you don't want to lose that control.
Oh, okay. By pin, it's like a giant, like?
Well, it's driven into the stone walls sometimes, even though that's not in the...
You can sort of see the marker here.
Yeah, there's a stake right there.
I didn't see that. Okay.
That shows where the pin is. When they did the survey, they must have put that in, so they can see the line. So, we did scale it off the plan and estimated it to be about 11 feet, knowing that you wanted to keep that piece with the pin in it. wanted to keep that piece with the pin in it at the corner.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. And thank you for reusing the stones. Our stones in Southborough should stay in Southborough. Thank you.
Ms. Brashir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Thompson, for coming in. Thank you for putting together a very thorough packet and also explaining what you wanted to do with the stones. You thought this out in advance, so it made it a lot easier for us. So thank you for the compliments to, to the staff of the planning department. It's nice to have them recognized. And again, thank you for being very thorough when you submitted and making our job easier. Thank you.
I'm glad I came here. I'm not afraid of you guys anymore.
I haven't made my comments yet. I'm just kidding. I drove by there today. I definitely see the issue. It goes in very, very narrow and then it widens out. So I can understand how people are hitting that wall. I have a stone wall at the end of my driveway that's hit all the time also, but my driveway is at least wide. The problem is that curves and people go straight, but that's their problem. So, yeah, thank you very much for, for coming in and for using the stones. And I have no questions. I'm fine with this, as long as. Sure. Does anyone in the room have any questions on this? Anyone on Zoom? Any, if you have a question, if you could raise your hand.
We currently have nine attendees. No hands raised.
Marnie, are you good to make this motion?
Sure.
Thanks.
I make, I make a move, a motion to approve the request to, for the scenic stone wall removal at Three Lyman Street.
Second.
Thank you.
And a vote.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I have a discussion with the condition that the, the stones are used for the stone wall on the north side of the driveway. So moved. Any other discussion? All in favor? Lutrelle, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuri, yes.
Brashir, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Mimi, do we need to close the public hearing?
Oh.
Yes. And Henry, we'll draft a letter that states the motion and the approval. We'll draft a letter to, to the, just a decision letter. And then we file that with the town clerk and we'll send you a copy as well.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for Three Lyman Street scenic stone wall removal.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Lutrelle, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demuri, yes.
Brashir, yes.
Keep forgetting that. I can't remember.
Next item on the agenda, public hearing, Deerfoot Road Extension, scenic stone wall removal. Karina?
Keith, why don't you come on up? And what we'll do is we'll open the public hearing first and then Mimi will let you know what to do. So this is a public hearing for scenic stone, scenic road stone wall removal and I'll be, I'll read the legal ad. This is September 12, 2023, public hearing notice, scenic road stone wall removal, south end of Deerfoot Road Extension. Pursuant to the provisions of MGL Chapter 40, Section 15C, the Southborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 2nd, 2023, at 7:15 PM in the McCallum Hearing Room located on the second floor of the townhouse, 17 Carmen Street, Southborough, Mass., 01772, and via Zoom to consider the partial removal of a stone wall at the south end of Deerfoot Extension, a scenic road. The request for stone wall removal was made by the Southborough Public Schools for additional bus turnaround space. Copy of the plans and application can be reviewed at the Southborough Townhouse in the Planning Department during normal business hours or on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposal should appear at the location and time designated above or can access the meeting remotely at the town website for virtual meetings. Mimi, Lutrelle, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. So we received the application, September 12th, and filed it with the town clerk. It was distributed to the DPW, the tree warden, selectman, tree warden designee as well. It was published in the newspaper on September 18th and September 25th is required with a hearing date of this evening. The application included, let me just pull that out. A narrative on the proposal for removal of the stone wall, some photographs, a report from, let me just get to it, a safety stop report that the school provided indicating some of the problems and things that were in the way to have a sufficient turnaround there. So the history is that in the past, and I'll just give a quick overview, as you recall, Peter Dowd had property there that has since been sold and lots were A and R. Peter, at the time, Mr. Dowd had allowed the school buses to turn around in his driveway. That driveway doesn't exist any longer and things change. So the school has been providing a, a smaller bus to pick the students up there. So in working with the DPW, the prior DPW director and now the current one, a plan was prepared to show the improvements that would help allow a school bus to turn around there. And the reason Mr. Lavoy is here, who's the Assistant Superintendent of the schools, is to, for the stone wall removal. So there's a section of stone wall that juts out slightly and it's on town property right at the end of Deerfoot Road Extension. There's also a utility pole there across the street. And Colleen, if you pull up the plan, and there's, albeit somewhat dissembled wall, but it appeared to have been a wall around the utility pole. There's also a picture of it as well. That's okay. So it's those two locations that he needs approval for stone wall removal. There are other aspects in the plan, but those are related to, the select board is the tree warden regarding some rose bushes that are also along the town property line as you go further towards the EMC property down the right away there. And then there's some mailboxes that will have to be moved and then some grading that will have to be done in order to help allow this school bus turnaround for the proper size bus. And this has been in the making for a while, but we made it here. So I just wanted to clarify that the request is for the stone walls, two pieces, those two sections of stone wall, the few stones around, the utility pole and a few section. I'm just going to point that here so the audience can see. There's this section of stone wall right here, those three or four stones that need to be moved. And then right here is the utility pole. Some over here is the utility pole. And there's some stones right here. You can see the little bit of line type right there and those have to be removed. There's some mailboxes here, but that's a private matter and the US Postal. There's a mailbox over here and then this area will need a little grading. But those are the two areas of stone. Okay.
You all set?
I know how to beat a dead horse.
Thank you, Karina. Welcome. Anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, typically, well, thank, I do want to thank Town Planner Quinn and Colleen for keeping me in line with this whole project and want to thank the constituents that live on Deerfoot for all their support throughout the process. Without them, I probably wouldn't be sitting here right now, but I'm glad I am to, to see this through. Typically, the school district doesn't get involved in these types of projects when it comes to neighborhoods and rock walls and trees and bushes and all sorts of stuff. But I thought it was important to see it through to the end and we had Superintendent Martino's support throughout to get us to this point. The, the key point being is that we want to make sure we can get our school, students to school safely and we want to make sure our bus company is supported with their requests. So as was included in the packet, the safety report was provided with, with some basic conditions to create a safe turnaround and that's why we're here. I, I did consult with, at the time, Karen Gallagher and then with Town Planner Quinn about how we go about this and what we tackle. And ultimately, like Karina said, it took a little while, but we are here. I feel like we're organized. DPW Superintendent, Mr. Kundif, is also in support of the project, the pieces that, that he'll be taking care of, which we're incredibly supportive of, and as well as the property owners for mailboxes and other types of things. So I feel like we're in a good spot right now. This is the more, you know, formal process to get us through, but I think very quickly we can resolve the issue and get the school bus back up Deerfoot, which had been done for so many years prior.
Very good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Stein.
Thanks for, again, for coming in. And similarly to the last proponent, we asked that the stones be repurposed locally. Can that be addressed?
Hundred percent, yes. The, the plan is to move the stones into existing rock walls that, that are adjacent to the area in question.
So on the same site or?
Yes, same site.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Houlihan.
Hi, Mr. Lavoy. It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
I just want to say thank you. And it's unfortunate that it is October and the school year started in September. So I'm sorry this has taken so long and, and that it, it was our kids' safety that was in question. So I have no questions. Fully support.
Mr. Maria.
Hello. First, I just want to ask, how many kids are up on that road, get on the bus up there?
At present, I think there are eight school age children. I could be wrong. I might be corrected within seconds, but within a few years, there is going to be over 12. So that's why we are looking for a more permanent solution up there because we know we will have school age children in that, on that street for many years to come.
Okay. And I can't really, I mean, I've been up in that area, but is it not appropriate for a school bus to do like a three-point turn or anything like that? Is that like not safe?
And that's what they were assessing to do.
Looking for a radius?
And that's what they were assessing to do. So they actually physically did take up what is historically been called the mini bus, which is actually a three-quarter bus or a full-length bus up into the street to see what they, what they had to do. And that's what generated the safety report. So they actually physically went up there with, with some of their experts and then constructed this as, you know, a, you know, a few conditions that were required to allow for that three-quarter bus to make a safe three-point turn in that area.
Okay, so it's not a, it's not just the turn radius. It's actually, they are making the three?
They will be, yes. This is to allow them to make a three-point turn.
Okay. I appreciate you clarifying that. And I guess my only other question is on the, you know, it's a shame that both sides of the stone wall have to be removed, actually all three areas, removing some wall having to do with the mailbox, right? Looks like some stones.
Not on that side, the mailboxes. It's just the mailboxes themselves that will be moved to the opposite side of the driveway. And then where Karina had pointed out, there are three, just three rocks right there. Yeah, would you mind, Karina? Thank you. At that outcropping right there, that will need to be repurposed back into the wall. And then if, when she goes to the left around the utility pole, which Colleen had up as a, as a nice picture a little earlier, those are the areas that will be impacted to make it wide enough so that bus can turn in there safely.
Yeah, broaden it. These, that, those are the two property ones, so.
Okay, so where the mailbox is, is, looks to be a curb, so that whole, and then some stones. So none of the stones will be touched, only the mailbox?
None of the stones on that interior side will be, will be, need to be moved. Just the mailboxes, right there.
So if you look at this picture here, these wa, these stones have to be removed?
No, Karina, they're, they're to the right. They're not, they're not pitches.
Oh, they're over here?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Those ones are good.
Those are good. Oh, yeah, that's further over. There's a little.
That's right.
Fence post here and then there's stones.
The second outcropping.
Okay.
Okay. And can we talk about the stones on the other side that, that are going to be moved? So there's, there's even a, there's a third spot of this sort of disheveled wall. And I'm wondering if the disheveled wall, which is hardly a wall where the rose bushes are going to be, I know there's a pole and.
Right there?
Yes. If, if that, if this, I see that there's a pole and a, whatever, a wire or something. But if this area were widened, would you need to do the work on the other two areas? I think it's just a shame that all three areas have to be impacted. So I didn't quite get that from the report, but we agree that this is sort of disheveled and hardly a wall.
Right.
Where the others are a little more historic. It looked like a wall. I just wonder whether that's been explored.
Let me see if I can get that outcropping. I think, maybe it's up. Right there, yeah. So those three rocks, where it's circled in red on the right? Yeah, the blue, yeah, the, the, these three rocks right there.
It's not the whole wall. On the Zoom, you can remove that.
So it's not both sections?
No, it is just the red.
Just the red, yes.
Just go to the annotation on, on the Zoom.
We like public participation.
Thank you. And then what will happen with those three stones?
Those will be back into the rock wall further down to the right.
The disheveled one?
Yeah. No, no, further down. On that side is where there are rose bushes and then beyond the rose bushes is a, a more materialized wall where it can be replaced too. But those three.
The rose bushes along this, as you head towards into the EMC property, that road. So those rose bushes under the select board and these stone walls here and then just the stones around the utility pole. That's it. These stones and the stones around the utility. The rose bushes are under the tree.
Right. Okay. And I, thank you for that and for helping me understand it. And I would like to hear from the impacted neighbors.
Ms. Brashir.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Lavoy, for coming. Can I just ask you, how quickly would the work start on what needs to be done as far as the rocks, the mailboxes potentially and, and any grading that needs to be done, I believe, for where it's actually the turnaround is going to be?
We have been in contact with DPW. The hope is that it could be started as soon as possible. And once the select board also is able to weigh in on the removal of those rose bushes. I think this hearing coupled with that, successfully negotiating those two, hopefully we can start without delay because it would be nice to get a bus up there as soon as possible.
Yeah, I, I've spoken to a couple of parents that are currently taking their kids to school and, you know, at the end of the day, it's the safety of the kids and I'm, I'm certainly fine with moving forward with this, as long as the, the rocks are replaced within a stone wall. So again, thank you for coming in. Thank you to the neighbors. I know they've been very involved in all of this.
And extremely patient. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I have no additional questions. Anyone in the audience have any questions? No?
We have, are you going to do the public here first?
I did. Does anyone, no? You have to come up to the, very, we're very formal at the microphone.
I would, I mean, I'm very frustrated. Oh, my name is Viber, 141 Deerfoot Road. I mean, this conversation started, what, I think, September of 2022. We are like October 2023. Very frustrated to begin with, but the way Keith has been supportive and working throughout, I would like to just say thank you.
You're welcome.
And yeah, as soon as, like, we can get this done. I have two kids, like you said, we have multiple kids, so going and driving the kids and like during the time, it's just, and I have to travel a lot for, for work. So I would appreciate if you can get it done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to bring Mr. Kundif over?
Yeah, we have the DPW Director with his hand raised.
Good evening. Bill Kundif, DPW Superintendent. Just a couple of things. I wanted to make sure everyone realizes that our plan is to, in addition to what was shown by Mr. Lavoy, is to also pave the end of that road. So Keith, I'm not sure if you can scroll to that one shot that shows the, the existing road. Not that one.
One more. There we go. There we go.
Yeah, that. So I think there's a slight delay when I see it, but yeah, so the, the concern here is a couple of things, you know, if we get snow vehicles plowing into this area, it's just going to make a mess and that's going to make it more difficult for vehicles to turn around. So we plan on paving an apron to support the turnaround and to make it a little more safe and a more, more appropriate for a vehicle to turn around. In terms of timing, we'll try to get it done this year. We're really working against the clock. It depends how cold it gets and how quickly it gets. It depends how cold it gets and how quickly it gets cold. Usually the asphalt plants will close around Thanksgiving, so that gives us about two months to get out there. We'll do our best to get it done this year.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill, does that include the stone wall removal too, or just the paving aspect?
We will go out there as quickly as we get an approval, assuming there's no appeal period, and take care of the incidental work. The paving will occur on a timeline probably.
Thanks.
I could just make one more comment-
Sure.
-to help round it out. Bill, thank you very much for that. We do appreciate the efforts, and I know as soon as we can get some of that site work complete, the, the rock wall, and then hopefully with the approval of the select board, the rosebushes, once that area is widened, it will be accessible for the bus to make the turnaround, so we won't have to wait with too much delay other than the delay that would be naturally occurring. So my hope is that we can get a bus up there sooner than Thanksgiving. Halloween would be great.
Oh, oh, music to my ears.
Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom, if you have a question or comment, raise your hand?
Currently nine attendees and no hands raised.
Okay.
Sure. I make a motion to close the public hearing for Deerfoot Road Extension scenic stone wall removal.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Barshio, yes.
I make a motion to approve the Deerfoot Road Extension scenic stone wall removal as stated, with the condition that the, the rocks are utilized on the stone wall as stated publicly.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Barshio, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully your kids will be riding the bus in November.
October.
Keith, we'll draft a letter of the decision-
That's great.
All right, and we'll follow up with you.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Hey, just quick point of order. I'm going to jump off now.
You did it.
Okay, thank you, Jessie. Discussion. Residents of Park Central 40B. Sure.
Okay, give me one second here. All right, quick, quick update. On September 18th, we were notified by Lara Davis, the zoning board's admin, that the applicant for Park Central had filed a comprehensive permit with the Zoning Board of Appeals. She provided a link, so there's a link online for the public if they want to see the documents because they're, they're significantly large. And if you do go there to open them from the ZBA website, give it a little time, and it eventually opens, so don't be scared if it doesn't open right away. Let's see here. The public hearing at the Zoning Board of Appeals is scheduled to open on October 11th at 7:00 PM. There is a legal ad that was posted for that with the ZBA, just so you're aware of that. The planning board has this on the agenda in order to discuss any comments they want to provide to the zoning board related to the project. As it stands right now, the project is under the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the entire application. I believe Town Council is working with the ZBA to make sure, and the building commissioner's code enforcement officer, to make sure the application is complete and everything moves forward. That's okay. So that's the general update.
So do we want to send a letter to the ZBA with initial comments for their first meeting? Ms. Houlihan.
So I have not had a chance to review the full 192-page document to provide full, full comprehensive feedback, but I would think it would benefit the zoning board to have some of our opinions in writing, so I would support that. I just may not be able to contribute at this stage.
Mr. Maria.
I agree. I think it would be helpful to the ZBA. I think that, you know, maybe some of the comments that we provided to Mass Housing could be useful to them. They kind of rose to the top, I think, in items that we felt were important to highlight. And so I look forward to reading the 190 pages, too. I haven't read it, but I think that we can, you know, maybe think about just reiterating some of those comments and, of course, adding from the additional detail that we've now received. Thanks.
Ms. Barshio.
I also agree we should send some initial comments, but I think we made clear that there'll be more comprehensive comments coming forward. I mean, I spent a few hours going through this, and I have a page of comments already. And again, it was just a quick scan of it, so I would definitely, as Deb said, go through some of the comments that we sent in our letter, but I also have some comments I think if the board was willing, might be important to include.
Do you want to share your comments?
I would love to share my comments. So one of the first things that concerned me, where it talked about on the conceptual plan, first it referenced that this development has proposed direct access from Flag Road via Route 9 westbound in Southborough to Park Central Drive. So that was the first flag to me, because my understanding was Mass DOT did not want access through Park Central Drive. And then as I drove back further within the documents, there is actually a plan that actually shows, it looks like it's going to be one-way coming in, and there's a small little island. So that's concerning to me, and I think that's going to be concerning to some level to Mass DOT, so I'd like, obviously, more information on that. One of the other things that I came up with as well was, I'd like to know, and maybe we won't get the answer, but I'd certainly like to know what the plan is for the rest of the property, as we're talking infrastructure on a road and whatnot going in, if, if potentially there's a build-out or a thought of a build-out someday, that might impact that as well. I have a concern regarding the access on Bantry. And I know this is a new plan, different from the other, but the, as I view it, there's, there's two egresses, ingress, egress, is Bantry and Flag Road and potentially Park Central Drive for one-way. So I'm a little concerned about flowing out so much traffic through our little connector roads. One of the other things I'd like to know is, when I sat on the select board prior, we had taken positions and upheld the positions not to allow a curb cut on the Flag Road and to force the developer to work with Mass DOT to figure out a little better access. I'd like to stress that point in a letter as well, and I'd also like to let the selectmen, hi Marguerite, know that, you know, that's something that I think is, is important to a lot of people, that, you know, the select board for years took that position, that there was no curb cut unless something better could come. Obviously, I'm concerned about four stories. I'd like to see, and maybe I missed it, again, it's so many pages, a map or a plan with the abutting homes placement, you know? I'd like to really see, as well as, I think that there needs to be requests for balloons to go up, so on the abutting properties can see what a four-story building may or may not be. I think we should take a position, if we can, that no mature trees are cut within a certain 40 feet, whatever it may be, of the abutting homes. I think for screening, that would certainly help. Blackthorn access. I think those were the main points I came up with so far. If the board, you know, wants to find a way to incorporate some of those, I'm sure there'll be more. Thank you.
I haven't gone through the whole thing, but I started, and so I only have one page of comments. The first thing I'd like to understand is the subdivision. Like, the Mass Housing gave eligibility approval for 17.38 acres, but it's a 100-acre lot that's being subdivided into six lots. So I understand that for a 40B, the local regs can be waived, but when most of the lot is not a 40B, then I don't understand how that works. Because the road goes in, like, right through the 20-foot no-touch, which wouldn't be allowed under our local regs, and it goes by lots that are not part of the 17.38 acres that got the eligibility. So that, I, that's the first big thing I'd like to understand. And then some of the waivers, like, why do they need to waive that the light can't be illuminated after 10:00 PM? It's in a residential neighborhood. Why do they need the sign illuminated after 10:00? And how does that frustrate their ability to do the development if the, the sign isn't illuminated after 10:00? The same with the lighting. They want the whole lighting bylaw waived, but I don't know how dark, compliance with dark skies and not trespassing on other residential properties would impede their ability to develop that property. Additionally, they have a couple catch-all waivers for any other bylaws or zoning, or, and that is hugely problematic, and I would advise the ZBA not to grant those catch-all waivers. Because the, so they, the ZBA goes, is allowed to go through each of these waivers and decide whether they're consistent with local needs and are required to permit the construction and the operation of the project. And if it's a catch-all, waive everything, how is it that they can determine that? The balloons is a great idea, and it should be pointed out, they're four-story buildings with underground parking, so it's taller than a four-story building, and it, they're all right up abutting the homes on Tyre and Blackthorn. And the last thing is that the building is a modern urban design apartment building, but it doesn't really go with the, the neighborhood. So those are my initial comments. Anyone in the audience have any comment? Yes, sir.
So Eric Glazer, 9 Skylar Drive. So you've probably seen my face in regards to the other 40B developments. I have more of a process question as I'm sort of learning this. Based on where this is in the queue, does this take precedence over the subsequent applications through the Ferris development? Or where, how does that fit in with this? How is the, the timing and the phasing of this relative to those? Does any, I don't know if you have a view on that? I'm just curious.
Well, so the two Ferrises are still waiting eligibility approval for Mass Housing, and this Park Central already received it. So they already put in their application, which the Ferris hasn't yet.
Okay.
So this, this is going first.
So they've already gone through the Mass Housing process?
Yes.
Okay. And then in theory, if this were to get approved and built, then it would satisfy ultimately whatever the threshold is for, for the affordable housing?
It would not.
It would not?
It would, it's 200 units, 25%, which is 50 units affordable, and I think that we're, we're short 77 or so.
And these are, these are rentals, or these are actual?
These are ownership.
Oh, ownership. Okay, so that is different.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't realize that. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. But what, what the thing to remember is if this is approved before the Ferris ones come, we can go into Safe Harbor because we've hit our 17 units for the year or whatever. Hi, John.
John Palmer, 131 Parkerville. Just a question. Where, does a public have access to the 190-page proposal in front of the ZBA? And if so, how do we get access to that?
Can I send them a link in chat?
Sure.
Can you see something here?
Oh, do we? I don't think we do. I think-
Let me just look at the ZBA webpage and see if we can, somebody's texting me right now. Okay, I thought that was somebody here. Okay, so if we go to Boards, and we go to Zoning Board, here, we go to their website. So if you go to the zoning board website through the town website-
Corinna?
Yes?
Maybe Colleen do this while you're-
Yeah.
She can show you on the screen.
She can show it on there. Okay. There's a direct link there.
So bottom line, it's on the ZBA's-
Yeah.
-section of the town's website.
Go to Boards and Committees. Yeah, you know where it is. Boards and Committees. Go to Boards and Committees.
Well, it's still, it's building and zoning.
Okay.
So it's the building and zoning page.
That's the departments. It's under Boards and Committees, not departments.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
To the left? All the way to the bottom?
Yeah, we got it. My fingers are shaky.
And if you scroll down a little bit?
This right here?
You see that, John?
I sure do. Thank you.
Okay, and like I said, it takes a little bit to open if the original file is so large. So if it does, if it's a little slow, give it, give it 30 seconds or so.
Thank you so much.
Could I just add one, one point?
Absolutely.
Okay, to the very thorough list that you guys made for only having taken a brief look, I just wanted to, to Lisa's comment about the balloons. You might remember that several of us showed up for the walk-through for the property and were never allowed on the property.
Yeah.
And that's unlike Ferris. I didn't attend that one, but for those two properties, I understand that people were actually allowed on the properties. So if we're going to do the balloons, which I think is a very good idea, I think that any of the boards and committees that were invited initially to walk the property should be able to walk the property in order to give thorough comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So request a site walk that's allowed on the site? Good point. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience here? Does anyone have their hand? No one has a hand?
No hands.
Okay. So do you want me to take the first crack at this, Corinna?
Yeah, or each member can send all their comments if you'd like to, because I know, it's up to you. If you don't have the bandwidth, we can do it, too. If you submit them to us, we'll type them up and-
Okay.
-get them written. But if, if we get other comments from the other planning board members, then we can culminate them into one, and then Mimi can use those to draft a letter or fine-tune it and add and make the order proper. And then Mimi can use those to draft a letter or fine-tune it and add and make the order proper.
I'll forward over by tomorrow morning, Karina, the comments I made today.
Super.
I was just going to copy the letter that we did before and add in different comments.
Yeah, because that's already all formatted. All right. That'd be super helpful.
All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda, St. Mark's Street Stonewall and Tree Mitigation and St. Mark's Park Plan. All right, let's make sure the color of focus is on something. Let me... Okay. All right.
Can we elevate Bill Kunder? Let's go to the panel.
Sure.
Okay, sorry, just had to get oriented. So this topic is about the St. Mark, the proposed St. Mark Street Park, AKA Heritage Park is what some people call it as well. And as you recall, at the last meeting or the prior meeting, we were told that they were working on somehow lowering the cost of the project because the bids came in so high. And we were waiting for Mark Purple to provide us with updated plans. So we did receive a set of updated plans. I think they're dated September 26th in that vicinity. And I distributed those to the Planning Board members to take a look at. Also, we had asked Bill Kunder, the DPW Director, who was part of the prior meeting as well, gave us some good input into that. So we understand the project. He's here as well on our request to be here. So he'll be able to speak to some of your questions. The other thing is, this was the other project that Mimi had recommended to the Planning Board last meeting to write a letter in regards to the MGL Chapter 41, Section 81I, so that the Planning Board has authority to look at it. So a draft copy of that letter was also provided.
And so that brings us to...
Now.
Hi again, Bill. Would you mind just updating us on what changed on the plans?
Sure thing. After the original bid came in substantially higher than we had funding for, we had to take a step back and look at the project as a whole and kind of come up with some ideas as to get it within a manageable scope. So, starting with the low-hanging fruit, one of the differences from the prior plan to this plan, down on the southerly end, you'll notice that the walkway now connects to the end of the library parking lot. Whereas before, it extended probably 50 feet down along the westerly edge of the parking lot, closer to the cemetery, and then did a 90-degree turn and entered one of the parking stalls in the lot, in the parking lot. So we thought reducing that length might be a little better in terms of cost. On the prior plan, we also had two rain gardens. We retained the larger one, the one further to the north. You can see it. It looks like a kidney bean-shaped thing. The prior one was down in the lower right-hand side of the page. And really, it was a redundant thing. So it was something that we thought we could eliminate. Beyond that, the number of plantings, maybe if you could, I'm not sure who's operating this, but if you could go to the tree planting plan, yes, that one. So the number of plantings over on the southwest side has been reduced. And those three things are the main differences. There were some other incidental things, like I thought it looked overly complicated, so I had them take a lot of the engineering-type things out. They had way too much on, you know, centerline stationing for the walkway. And, you know, they had pointed tangencies, point of reverse curvatures, and things like that, that really you don't need for this type of project or layout. So, you know, we didn't want to overkill it with engineering. So, you know, that was something we took out. And then we also decided to make it a lump-sum bid because there was concern about possibly getting, paying premium for taking down some of the inch-and-a-half diameter trees, the brush along Marlborough Road. We were concerned that they might try to hit us with an extra on that. So we decided a lump-sum might be a better approach for that. And that's really it.
Sorry, Bill.
The, the, I'm sorry, one more thing. The Stonewall along the northerly edge, that is bid as an ad alternate. It's what's called an ad alternate. So the Board, at the time they award the contract, would have to make a decision at that time on whether or not to include the Stonewall.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah?
Ms. Houlihan?
Yes, Ms. Luttrell, can you remind me what the number of trees were as part of the mitigation plan?
11. 11 in the Select Board policy requires native. And the recommendation from the St. Mark's Working Group requires native. And they were all native. I don't know where those two cultivars came from.
So it achieves the count, but it doesn't achieve the requested native species. Those were changed from the original.
That's correct.
And so, of course, we would prefer native species. And the Stonewall, this is a plea to the Select Board, but part of the mitigation was, it was taken down illegally. It shouldn't be a, you've spent quite a lot of money on this project. And the townspeople, we have the stones, I think, still piled there. This shouldn't be an optional piece of this. So I think in our letter back, I think we should make that, that the Stonewall is a requirement based on the mitigation. It's just so challenging for us to enforce policy, procedures, and bylaws when our own town-elected boards don't follow the rules. So it's, it really isn't, it doesn't bode well for the town residents to follow the rules if our elected officials don't. So I just don't think there is an option there. That's my two cents, Mimi. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maria.
I have a couple comments. At the, the beginning of the park was being developed. The two rain gardens, I think they were developed on the original plan by VHP. And so one question I have is, if one of them was dispensable, why was it ever put on the plan to begin with? I mean, don't we think that it was needed?
Is that a question for me?
I think so, because you're in touch with our contractor for our town engineer. I mean, I, I understand that was like a, from the St. Mark's Street Working Group, I think we had, one of the members state that that was always a given, that there really needed to be two rain gardens. And I'm not sure whether anybody questioned it, but, you know, how can you just get rid of one? So, I mean, are there, like, drainage calculations or something that have been done to assess whether one would be sufficient?
Okay. I'm looking at the original plan for the park, which was part of Perkins' contract. The original plan only has one rain garden. I presume at that time, they did in fact do some calculations. I believe adding the second rain garden, when they pulled that portion of the contract from Perkins and decided to award it separately. I don't think they did additional calculations. Again, I'm speculating. But because it was an increase in the number of rain gardens, you know, certainly the water quality is what, what the purpose of a rain garden is. It's to improve water quality. It's not really to handle the flow and detain the flow. It's really intended to improve the quality of the water. So eliminating the same one that was never there to begin with, we didn't think was an issue. So that's why we proceeded that way.
Okay, thank you. The other is, the, when the bids came in, they came in super high, right? They came in around 400 and something, 450,000 or something? And I think that the town agreed on a target of 290,000 was what was in the warrant article. So with the changes that are being proposed, do you think that, you know, removing a pathway and, I don't know, number of vegetation and a rain garden, is that, do you think that is going to put the cost down into the range that was approved at town meeting at about 290,000?
I, I do. Part of the reason I say that is because we did have a discussion about extending the contract timeline. Originally, it was intended to get everything done this year, which would have been very aggressive. So we, we are allowing the tree plantings to occur in the spring as part of this contract. So that gives a little more breathing room for a contractor to come in and acquire the necessarily, necessary plantings that, that they need.
Okay, and then the Stonewall, when the St. Mark's Street Working Group was discussing Stonewall, I think it was also discussed at the Select Board. I mean, there were some figures that were thrown around about how expensive it is to build a Stonewall. And I'm just curious, the one that is listed here that is currently outside of the kind of the scope of what this bid is going to be, how much do you think it would cost to build that Stonewall? And by the way, how many feet is that Stonewall as drawn on, on the plan?
If you bear with me for just a second. It's pretty close to 100 feet. I'm not going to say exactly, but it's pretty close to 100 feet. You see Station 200 up there on the upper left?
Yes.
And if you go to the right, there should be another station call-out over on the upper right. So there's 13, keep going. I'm sorry, keep going.
101.
But, I'm sorry, that's Station 13 there. Yeah, there you go. Okay, so that, see Station 13, you keep moving it. Scroll, pull it down so the page goes down the other way. I'm looking at St. Mark's Street, yes. I want to see St. Mark's Street.
He can't, here, it's delayed. When you see it, when you pull it, it takes a while. So you want to see the new roadway, right there, okay?
Beautiful. Okay. So that 13 near the Hampton?
Yep.
And that 14 over on the right, that's 100 feet, just to give you an idea.
Yep, so the question is, there were some figures that were discussed about how much per square foot a Stonewall, a certain height usually is. Have you costed out that Stonewall?
I have not. VHB may have. I, I have not.
I guess I'd like to see it included in this plan. You know, we've had, we had a, several discussions on it. And, you know, first of all, it, it looks a lot nicer with a Stonewall, doesn't it? But it's also for safety. So, you know, this is kind of a little bit of an unfortunate spot for a park because there's, you know, so many roads. And thinking that there's going to be story hour at the library and children and possibly grandparents that are there. And I just picture a little kid running into the roadway. I think about this Stonewall as really being there for safety. But also, under the scenic road bylaw, it was unlawfully removed. And so I think it has to be part of this plan. I think it's going to be expensive. Based on, I think, maybe Ms. Brascio remembers, there were some costs being thrown around in the $100,000 or $200,000 range. And I, so, you know, sure, if you get rid of some features like Stonewall, it's going to put the park bid into what the town voted on. But I think to be true to the town and to be true to our bylaw, I think we've got to, you know, figure out a way to lower the cost. But also, I think that Stonewall feature really needs to be there. Not because it looks pretty, because South Row has a lot of Stonewalls. But I, I think of it, you know, that, that location, by the way, is the first time I'm seeing this. No, maybe it was on another plan and I just didn't see it. But I think that is a fine place for it. It needs to be right there at the road so kids don't run into the road. So I think of it as safety, and it really needs to be part, part of this plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Brascio?
So I don't really have anything further to add other than the big question I had was the price and being an adult and based on the, the mitigation that was agreed upon. So I think, Debbie, you put it pretty doggone eloquently. So I will certainly leave it at that. Thank you.
So is the new bid going to be similar to the old bid?
How so?
Well, so the, the, we were assured that the stones that were removed from the old Stonewall and excavated on-site would be used in a new Stonewall. But the bid states that the stones excavated on-site may be used, which isn't a, which isn't a requirement.
Right. It's not too late to change that language, and I'll talk to the engineer about that.
And my other question was, what was being mitigated was an old farmer's wall. And the wall on the bid has mortar, which those old farm walls did not. Yeah, and those were, I just, you know, we've been talking about this plan forever. And I know you weren't here then, Bill, and I'm sorry you have to get dragged into this. But, you know, this plan was supposed to have the mitigation for the trees and the Stonewalls that were removed. And somehow, we had all native trees. And now I don't know how those cultivars all of a sudden showed up there. And, you know, I know I sound persnickety, but those trees with variegated leaves do not support the insect population in the food web because they're made to be pretty for humans, not for insects. So I have an issue with that. So I don't think the trees have been mitigated. And the Stonewall is an add-on. And we were assured it would be part of the park to mitigate what was taken. It's just very frustrating. And it seems like our comments from the last meeting weren't taken into account. So this was another one of those Chapter 40, 81Is. And I don't know how far this Board wants to, to push it. Do we want to require a, this reference to us in a report from us before any further action is taken? Or continue to write letters?
Ms. Brascio.
Well, I guess my question would be, Planning Board did a report, but the report was on the road. Correct me, I was not on the Planning Board then. So we would be requesting to do a report on the park. Will we be requesting to do this prior to this going out to bid or in a simultaneous process?
May I interject?
Sure.
Okay, it is out to bid currently.
Simultaneous it is.
So October 12th is when bid submissions and bid opening occurs.
Thank you, Bill. Then my answer is yes to sending the letter.
We're going to start this way. I'll just go next. And I think so. I think we just need to chronicle some of this because I feel like some of this stuff is getting lost. Even these important details about a farmer's wall and no mortar and also using Southborough stone as much as possible, not any kind of yellow stone or something like this. This stuff just is getting lost. So I think, I think we should write a letter.
So I agree. I think our challenge now is that an RFP has already been issued. Proposals are coming in. What's the out, like, what are we, in our letter, it's a report. Does it open up and request the Select Board renegotiate the criteria? Because, because at least what I'm understanding is this plan that's before us with the cultivars, with this optional stone wall, is what went out for the RFP. Is that right, Bill?
The plan set you are looking at is what went out, yes.
Could I have an alternative? Why don't we, we've had comments on this tonight. I think the points that we would probably make in a report if it made, why don't we just send a report? We'll call it a report, call it a letter, but once again, put the Planning Board's position out there once again in writing.
When did this go out to bid, Bill?
Want to say the 28th off the top of my head. Yes, 28.
And we received it on the 26th?
That's my understanding. We received it on the 26th, too. We got it to you as soon as we got it, yes.
What does that mean exactly? It gets posted in the Central Register, right? So something got posted without an actual plan? Or did I, an misunderstanding?
They got the plan on the 26th. It went out to bid on the 28th.
Oh, okay.
So the, you know, us being able to comment on it is fake. Moot.
Sorry, I'm just going to divert for a second. Bill, the, do we have, where are the stone, do we have stones on site that will build a hundred-foot stone wall, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, we have stones available from the original wall, correct.
And our process requires a standardized RFP because I'm just, I don't, I don't know.
I just want to mention, I think in the, one of the hearings with the Select Board, I think it was determined that there were not a hundred feet of, there's stones. And I don't know if they're still on the property where they are. Hope they're still there. But I recall that there were not a hundred feet that would need to be supplemented with stone from elsewhere.
So I'm in agreement with Lisa. I think we compile our thoughts tonight. Again, it's kind of expressed the concern that there was not even a request to, you know, get our feedback in the two days that they turned around the plan. They certainly provided it to us. I don't think they want our feedback. But I think we share it with them anyway.
Very good. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, everyone. Good luck tonight, okay?
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good night.
We currently have six attendees, no hands raised, in the Zoom attendee room.
Anybody here have comment on the park? Onto Planner's Report.
So just to clarify, we want to submit that letter that Mimi drafted about requesting the review? Or it's just going to be a letter with the comments?
Letter with our comments and trying to find out how, how the, how has this been mitigated as assured on 5/2/2023?
Okay. Do you all have comments you can send me?
Sure.
Okay, then we'll put that together. Okay. Planner's Report remaining?
Yay!
Okay, let's get that done. Make sure I didn't miss anything. Okay. That's good. Here, my agenda. Zoning map, working on it, getting closer. The APPA funds that were proposed, I just want to give you a quick update, if I haven't already. Mass Autobahn didn't have the staffing to provide a proposal to update the deed research database. So I'm going to reach out and see if we can find some other consultants. So if you have any ideas on that, just pop me an email. I spoke to Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. Also asked her if she had any consultants that she would recommend us reaching out to. The Mass Autobahn did provide me with one name potentially. And I'll check who the attorney was who did the work at the time because they may still be interested as well. Because I think a lot of the work was by the attorney. The tough work was the digging on the deeds and all that stuff. Albeit, these are newer from 2015 forward, and there aren't that many. So we'll see where that pans out. So still working on that. We spoke about 21 Highland Street already. We had on here a topic about defining the steps in the permitting process for the proposed 40Bs, meaning the ones that are eventually coming, hopefully 120 Turnpike and 250 Turnpike, and then also the residents at Park Central. And we reached out to Town Council to see if, and to the zoning board chair to kind of coordinate a meeting with the Planning Board. The turnaround time for the Park Central 40B is pretty quick. So they were already posted and published and on the agenda for October 11th with the ZBA. So in speaking with Town Council, he recommended that because time is short and, you know, they're extremely busy, that perhaps he could have a meeting with just the chair, Mimi, the Planning Board Chair, and the ZBA Chair, David Williams, and me. And also Casey Belling gave, the Building Commissioner wanted to be involved as well. And then we wouldn't need to, it would be more of an internal discussion to get some of the questions out about the act, you know, the process. These questions about what does the subdivision mean, where can that go with the roadway, what about the frontage for 120, just generally also the permitting process itself. And there won't be any conflicts there because it's not a quorum. And Mimi will be able to vet some general questions that she knows the Planning Board's been asking all along, just about the process.
How soon, Karina, is he willing to make himself available to start that?
He already committed to Wednesday at 1:30 with a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
And I, and Mimi and I are on board, and he's on board. So we're just waiting for David Williams. And worst case is if David can't be there himself because he works during the day, you know, Mimi and I can meet and the Building Commissioner can be there, and at least we can get some questions asked.
Great, thank you.
I'd still like to have a joint meeting with the CPA. And so we, for, so we can't discuss Park Central because it's already before them. But 120 and 250 aren't, and there are all these, you know, permitting questions on those two projects. So I would still like to push for that. But I guess he's busy until after the holiday, which is, you know, next weekend.
He had also provided the ZBA with a similar workshop in the past, which he said, you know, typically is a two-hour window to have that. So we would have to block that kind of time. And I asked if he had somebody else on staff that could, you know, fit, sit in for him. And he says they do have, they have other attorneys who are capable there. But since he's going to be working closely with the ZBA on this, he wanted to be the one, since he's working with Southborough, to provide that input as he's closer to the process.
So was he thinking he has to do the whole 40B workshop? I was thinking we have specific questions on these two projects.
I think either way would, it's not as critical as, I think there's a concern that if he has a question session now with complete boards attending, with the 40B application already submitted for Park Central, that there is potential for seeping into areas you can't discuss. And if it's more on a one-to-one basis, we can get information and get some clarification on these questions. But, and it's not so much with 120 and 250 because they haven't applied yet. But there's just a concern with that kind of overlap and inappropriate discussion with full boards when there's an application in place. That was my impression.
Right. Well, I think we're disciplined enough not to discuss Park Central, and we realize that that's...
Right. Plus, he would be an idiater, so to speak, that if someone started to venture, he could say, "Sorry, you can't talk that way." So I can pursue with him a meeting, even if the Park Central project already started. The general questions of a 40B and state law and what's allowed and what isn't is still valid into that for just future. You know, not just this one, but future. And I think if we ask generic questions, I'm not sure if, there's a fear that that can be construed as you're asking a generic question, but we know why you're asking it.
Well, so on 120 and 250, I have specific questions relating to the previous permits. Like, they were permitted to do A, and the conditions were, you know, no, on 250, no development in the backlot and 50-foot setbacks and blah, blah, blah. Well, they're still doing A, but now they're building in the back. I don't understand that.
Right, the disconnect and the overlap and what stays and all that. And we have asked and the, and the answers, we have gotten some answers, but they're relatively limited. So it's very difficult to do follow-up questions without having a dialogue. You know, you ask a question and then you have to wait, and then you get an answer and it's not quite there because it's just text on a...
Right, which is why a joint meeting would be helpful.
Yeah, so if the Planning Board wants, I'd continue to pursue for a joint.
And we won't discuss Park Central?
Right, no Park Central. Yeah.
Promise. We'll swear an oath.
It will likely be after the opening of Park Central anyway.
Correct.
So in the next few weeks, if we can get the ZBA, I haven't seen email back yet if David Williams has answered yet. But he was absolutely willing to get that same kind of input. Because I think they're down, they'll be down potentially two members for the 40Bs when they come in right now. Okay, I'll keep pursuing that and we'll get a meeting sooner or later.
I don't think they can be down two members. They have a, they have a quorum requirement of four.
Four, and one of the members may be able to do rule of necessity. I'm not sure if she's an actual director butter or just is concerned with being close to it. So, but there is an opportunity for rule of necessity. She discloses that she can be impartial. I don't, and I'm throwing around people as if I have spoken to them directly. I haven't. This is kind of hearsay through the town grapevine, just in passing. Okay, so that's it. I'll continue to pursue that ZBA Planning Board meeting with Jay Talaman. And he will probably be the person, but we'll try and get him a couple of weeks out so he has advance notice to schedule something as well as with the ZBA.
Karina, can you remind us when we expect to have the Ferris Development property determinations for mass housing?
They just indicated that they received them. They didn't tell us when they'll have a response.
Okay, I think they have a 90-day target or something, don't they?
Oh, do they? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's exact, but I think it appears to be that way. Okay. I'll check. Check on mass housing approval timeframe for 120 and 250. Okay.
And that's it. We don't have minutes for September 18th. Bridget's working on those. She'll also be providing minutes for both the MBTA forums, which were the, and the 19th, there was a, there was a joint meeting posted with the Planning Board at the Select Board to talk about 21 Highland and Public Works Planning Board and the park, I believe those three topics. And two of those, the park and Public Works Planning Board, that Select Board meeting, actually, it culminated in the fact that there are two groups now, two working, oh, Public Shade Tree, I'm sorry. Public Shade Tree and Public Works Planning Board, are those the two? Yeah, okay, sorry. There's like four of them on there. Okay, keep it in my head. And the next meeting is October 16th.
Would it be okay if I just said a couple of words about the Public Works Planning Board under the Planner's Report? Just a little?
Sure.
Just a, just a little, little brief update that this is potential warrant article, let's say, for the spring town meeting. Sam and I met together with Tim Litt, who's here tonight, and had a nice productive conversation. There's been, I call it a lively email exchange over the past couple of weeks. And lots of information shared in public Google Drive and presentations. And Mr. Litt is well underway with creating the amendment to the 1991 Legislative Acts, as well as creating the warrant article and the potential wording to create a bylaw committee so that the newly formed committee, which they're calling the Public Works Advisory Committee, would be under local control. So I just wanted to let the committee know that Mr. Litt has put together a series of documents, including a nice timeline of, you know, when we would be seeking input from stakeholders, including the Planning Board. And wanted to also ask the Planning Board if it could be put onto the agenda for next time so we stay on schedule, which I guess would be the 16th. And he's prepared a presentation, and perhaps he'd be willing to give a short presentation at that time. And, yeah, just to say that it's going along very well. Little interruption because I had a long weekend off, but I hope that we're back on track today.
Thank you very much, Debbie and Tim. Working together is just so fabulous.
Working together is just so fabulous.
And if I may, Madam Chair, ask Mr. Lit if he has anything to add, if I got that correct, or if he would change anything.
Tim Lit, Woodland Road. You have it mostly correct. So I'll give you sort of the really short form of where things are. Originally, Al Hamilton had this as a goal from the Select Board thing. It got reassigned to Sam Stivers because Al has volunteered for more stuff than he can deal with. And I guess you were there when the Select Board volunteered me to help make this happen. So Debbie is, is representing the Planning Board in all this. So far, I think we've succeeded in, in redefining the goal from abolish the Public Works Planning Board to fix the tree ward and dissolve the current Public Works Planning Board and replace with a standing committee, as we've talked about at some of your past meetings. So the team at the moment is the three of us. There is a project plan. There are actually two articles for a town meeting. There's one that's required in order to get the home rule petition authorized and eventually filed. And there's a second one to create the bylaw committee. Things are, are coming together. There are a few issues. I'm talking with Bill Kondov tomorrow, and we'll be, you know, here and talking to the other stakeholders to make sure that there aren't surprises, and hopefully we'll have everyone's support. So that's, that's where I think we are.
Thank you, Tim.
That was a very, very helpful update. We don't always get all the behind the scenes, so thank you.
So I think that we have come to the conclusion.
I make a motion to adjourn the Planning Board meeting for October 2nd.
Second.
I have a motion and second and a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brascio, yes.
Thank you, everyone.